Good evening. The 44th meeting of the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder to the members of the public and to press, please, if you're in chambers, wear masks. The entire council is fully vaccinated as well as boosted. Also, we please remind everyone to turn off any electronic devices at this time, including cell phones. Our invocation this evening will be delivered by Elder Wanda London of the Eastern District Baltimore Annual Conference. We are amongst a trailblazer because Ms. Elder London is the first female Eastern District of Baltimore Annual Conference of AME that was named as an elder. So if we could please give it up to Elder London. So the council would like to welcome you with warm arms as you provide our invocation. Thank you so much.
God bless you. Let us pray. Dear God, we come before you this afternoon, recognizing your omnipotence as the creator of all things, your omnipresence as you have the whole world in your hands, and your omniscience as we trust your wisdom and knowledge of even our current needs in this moment. But before we ask you for anything, we want to thank you for everything. Thank you for this day and for keeping us safe throughout the day. We come humbly asking, humbly understanding that it's in you that we live and move and have our very being. So God, we thank you for this opportunity to gather for the important work of the Baltimore City Council. For your word tells us that you have put all things in place, even governing bodies have been instituted by you, and because God has provided them, we are all subject to them. Therefore, God, we do thank you for this council. We humbly invoke and invite your presence into this space, and we thank you for another opportunity to conduct this business. God, we pray for our leaders that you have positioned here in this season. We pray for each council member as they represent their respective districts. We pray you endow them with wisdom and grace as they deliberate. We pray that a spirit of cooperation and compromise would reign as they seek to unite their separate interests to benefit Baltimore City as a whole. We pray for Council Chair Mosby as he guides the council through its work. And we ask your rich blessing upon the city of Baltimore and every part of its government. So now, God submitting everything to you and asking you to guide us, we thank you in advance for the success of this work. In the name of our God, we offer this prayer. Let every heart say, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Elder London. We understand and know the history of the African Methodist Episcopal Church, and your time out to come and grace us with your presence is truly, truly appreciated. So thank you very much. At this time, we'll go to the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I ask clerk to please call the roll.
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, and Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed to the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the November 7, 2022 proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two of the agenda. We'll now turn to executive nominations. Madam Clerk, if you could please jump into the executive nominations.
EA-22-0137 Keon T. Abdul Malik, Member Baltimore City Commission for Women.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA-22-0138 Miriam Karian, Member Baltimore City Commission for Women.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA-22-0139 Sarah Sajija-K Desikian, Member Baltimore City Commission for Women.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA-22-0140 Carolyn Jewell, Member Baltimore City Commission for Women.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA-22-0141 Yasmin Karamian, Member Baltimore City Commission for Women.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA-22-0142 Sierra Miles, Member Baltimore City Commission for Women.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA-22-0143 Monica E. Mitchell, Member Baltimore City Commission for Women.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA-22-0144 Robin A. Neverden, Member Baltimore City Commission for Women.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA-22-0145 Anna Rodney, Member Baltimore City Commission for Women.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA-22-0146 Tevis S. Simon, Member Baltimore City Commission for Women.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA-22-0147 Ellis Mothers, Member Baltimore City Commission for Women.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA-22-0148 Stephanie Solbarin, Member Baltimore City Commission for Women.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA-22-0149 Gab Sussman, Member Baltimore City Commission for Women.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA-22-0150 Sarah Elizabeth Wally, Member Baltimore City Commission for Women.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. I will now turn to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, please read in first bill.
City Council Bill 22-0300 Waterfront Management District and Waterfront Management Authority Renewal Through April 23, 2027, for the purpose of renewing and continuing the Waterfront Management District and Waterfront Management Authority, providing for a special effective date and generally relating to the activities and authority of the Waterfront Management District and Waterfront Management Authority. Sponsor is Chair Costello.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Next bill, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0294 Sale of Properties, 500 North Pulaski Street and 502 North Pulaski Street, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and the City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale, all its interests and certain properties are located at 500 North Pulaski Street, Block 117, Lot 1 and 502, North Pulaski Street, Block 117, Lot 2, and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is President Mosby on behalf of the comptroller.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 22-0301 Sale of Property, 844 Roundview Road, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and the City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale, all its interests and certain property that is located at 844 Roundview Road, Block 7622, Lot 2, and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is President Mosby on behalf of the comptroller.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Now, we're going to go into resolutions to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first resolution.
City Council Resolution 22-0144R Request for State Action prohibiting the Use of Address and Creating Car Insurance Premiums, for the purpose of calling on the Maryland General Assembly to pass and the governor to sign legislation prohibiting insurance companies from considering location as a factor impacting car insurance premiums. Sponsor is Chair Stokes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The board would like to call on Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We know, and my, we know that we get calls, and I think my colleagues talk about exactly how much our constituents pay for car insurance, and I look forward to work with the insurance company and General Assembly so we can look at that and address a little more. So, Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, I move the residence to be adopted.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, if you could please call a roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The ayes have it. The motion is approved, and this resolution is adopted. Madam Clerk, if you could go into the next resolution.
City Council Resolution 22-0145R Recognizing the Service of Matt Stugman, for the purpose of recognizing Matt Stugman for his distinguished service to the city of Baltimore. Sponsor is President Mosby.
I would like to recognize Chairman Costello. Immediate adoption. Immediate adoption.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to be added as a cosponsor on that and...
Okay, we'll take cosponsors now. Is it unanimous? There it is. Please ensure that all members of the Baltimore City Council would like to co-sign on to this. At this time, I'd like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have comments, but in the meantime, I'd like to suspend, move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Now, move the bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably for immediate adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. We're going to go into roll call, but before we do so, I'm going to give members an opportunity to stand up and speak if they shall choose when a clerk calls your name.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Aye.
Dorsey.
One second. The Chair would like to recognize Councilman Dorsey as he explains his vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Matt Stugman is a great guy and has contributed admirably to the city of Baltimore. He has been in service to the city of Baltimore longer than he has worked for the city of Baltimore. Matt worked for Chairman McIntosh in the State House and was a fixture in Annapolis and certainly helped me as a, as a member here whose district overlaps with the 43rd District and, and in seeing to it that a number of things citywide were addressed and that I had questions answered when he was in Annapolis. And so I'm just very thankful for all of the work that he has done in service to the city of Baltimore, and I look forward to the contribution that he will continue to make as Baltimore City has a lot to do with the health of the Chesapeake Bay and his new role at the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. Thank you. So thank you, Mr. President, for bringing this forth, and thank you for all your service, Matt.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. I think we're on Conway now.
Conway.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, you know, I can't say enough about Matt and what he's meant to me as a first-term council member, kind of learning this process, understanding City Hall, understanding city processes, understanding politics and everything in between. You've been nothing but a phenomenal partner, and, you know, the least we could do is a resolution for you. I think you deserve so much more, and I'm happy to see you go into a great organization, which can definitely benefit from you. And if you ever want to come back, I'm sure any one of us will take your times too. So I wish you the best, and my vote is a yes. Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
And that's a yes. And I just want to add, we're going to miss you, Matt. I first met Matt really all the way back with our former mayor, Young, and Matt has been just a dedicated city public servant, just helping all of us. Even in the times when you are absent, Mr. President, Matt was there to, to help me, you know, usher the Board of Estimates or whatever meetings through. So I definitely appreciate that, and you're going to surely be missed, and best wishes to in your next endeavor.
Torrance.
I'll take off my mask. Matt, best wishes for you. It's kind of symbiotic because I think about the fact that we've, it's our third time working together, from when we worked in Annapolis and then we went to law school at U of B together. So, and then being here on the council, I'm honored to see you grow, but also honored to see what you'll do for Baltimore. Good luck, brother.
Burnett.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Matt, just wanted to say congratulations despite your, despite your role, I think you're the best numbers guy, field guy around in Baltimore City, and so I just wanted to say congratulations on your new role.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is no surprise that someone from the School of Chairwoman McIntosh is the caliber of not just employee but person that Matt Stugman is. Matt, I can't tell you how much I appreciate your friendship and support and working together over the years. I'm wishing you all the best as CPF. I know you're going to continue to do great things. Thank you. I'm an aye.
Stokes.
Thank you, Matt. I just want to mention, I hope you still have your same cellphone. And the only reason why I say that because Broadway East in my community just won the Chesapeake Bay grant, and we're going to be planting 300 trees. So Matt, you not going away, and I'm not going away. Congratulations.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
Matt, you're my constituent. I'm grateful to have you as my constituent, and even though you've moved in the district, you're there, so that's wonderful. Also, thanks for your expertise. For those who don't know, Matt was my first campaign manager when I ran in 2011, and, you know, we've been colleagues and friends since then. I've learned a lot from you, and I know you'll continue to do great things. So thank you.
So that is, thank you. That is unanimous. I'm going to take this time out to quickly talk about Matt. You know, when I decided to run for City Council President and ultimately won, you know, it was important for me to, you know, put together a team. And I constantly talk about professionalizing the council in a way that I had the opportunity to kind of see the legislative body in Annapolis work as well as some of our sister cities and colleagues in other places. And I had a chance to sit down with a lot of people, but there was one person I sat down with that I thought felt my vision and I felt like was going to deliver it in a way that Baltimore City residents really deserved and this chamber deserved. And Matt stood with me step by step through the process of us building out from reconfiguring the council committees to developing where certain policy issues would go, to even finally figuring out where certain members were going to go. I mean, it was the full gamut, and he's been there with me ever since, through thick and thin. The one thing I'll say is you can tell the true character of a man, not in the great times, not in the fun times, but in the tough times. And every single time that, you know, I pick up the phone to call Matt, what we would talk about, he was always 100% dead-on, right-on, and really committed to the work and to the citizens of Baltimore. Many people don't know this. I think they do probably say no, Matt, he's from Cleveland. And, you know, Cleveland and Baltimore kind of have some of the similar things as relates to reindustrialization of the cities, as it relates to, you know, how the city kind of moves and transforms into this new era. And I always appreciated Matt leaning on kind of his care and his comfort in Cleveland and just kind of symbolically gesturing, you know, certain things about Cleveland and Baltimore. We would kind of always play back and forth with that. So he's going to be well missed. The thing is, we've gained a high-profile environmental attorney now coming out of this body, so we can always lean on Matt to help us and support us down in Annapolis. So with that, I would like you to come up here real quick, Matt, and we have a small token of our appreciation that he gets to hang on that high-power, high-powerful environmentalist wall down in Annapolis. But it says, "The City Council of Baltimore Presidential Citation. I Nick J. Mosby, President of Baltimore City Council, do hereby present this president's citation to the Matt Stugman in recognition of your years of dedicated commitment and service to the office of Baltimore City Council and the office of the council president. In witness whereof, the city of Baltimore extends its sincerest congratulations, and I affix my signature to the citation on this occasion, given under the corporate seal of the city of Baltimore this 21st day, November in the year of 2022." So before I give him this, you know, Matt is a man of small words in public. I told him today at the luncheon that we were going to force him to speak before he left, so I'm not going to give him this until he comes up here and utters a couple of words for us.
Just thank you, everybody. You know, as the council president just said, you know, I get really embarrassed. I don't like to talk about myself, so I'm not going to use this as an opportunity to talk about myself. I'm going to talk about all of you. And I just want to say, all the, all my colleagues in the president's office, all the folks in the office of council services, folks in the agencies, the mayor's office, all of the elected council people and your staff has really made my time in city government something that I'm really going to draw strength from and treasure as I go forward through life. So I just, I really want to thank you for your friendship now and in the years ahead. And you're just, you're going to get me a little bit choked up here, but I just, I really have appreciated the opportunity to work with all of you, and, you know, hopefully you'll always know where to find me.
Thank you. So obviously, that motion is approved, and the resolution will be immediately adopted. We're going to move on to consent calendar. You can find consent calendar in section A in the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been, it's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. The calendar is approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. Before we do, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we'll be in short titles for the duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles for the duration of the meeting. The first, first, we're going to go to Rules and Oversight. Madam Clerk, if you could read in the first bill.
EA-22-0123 Deborah T. Books, Director, Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success.
The body would like to recognize Chairman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held a hearing on November 17 to consider 14 executive appointments. We are reporting them all favorable, so I'd like to move this nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. Please go to the next executive nomination, Madam Clerk.
EA-22-0124 Viola A. Woolam, Member Adult Public Guardian Review Board.
The board would like to recognize Chairman Schleifer.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA-22-0125 Byron T. Dees, Member Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees.
I'd like to call on Chairman Schleifer.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA-22-0126 Charlene Carter, Member Fair Election Fund Commission.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA-22-0127 LaShonda A. Jackson, Member Fair Election Fund Commission.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA-22-0128 Sam Novae, Member Fair Election Fund Commission.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA-22-0129 Jonathan S. Weinstein, Member Fair Election Fund Commission.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA-22-0130 Michael Moysev, Director, Department of Finance.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA-22-0131 Paris O'Connor Beiner, Member Fair Election Fund Commission.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA-22-0132 Mansour Abdul Malik, Member Police Accountability Board.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA-22-0133 Mark Brody, Member Police Accountability Board.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA-22-0134 Janetta Gilmore, Member Police Accountability Board.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Nomination is approved.
EA-22-0135 Lisa Nguyen, Member Police Accountability Board.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Nomination is approved.
EA-22-0136 Avi Woloski, Member Police Accountability Board.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This nomination is approved. We will now turn to bills on third reading for final passage. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the first bill.
City Council Bill 22-0113 Zoning Code Modifications, President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 22-0200 Urban Renewal Central Business District Amendment 2, President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
Oh.
Go ahead.
After the next bill is introduced, I'd like to be recognized before we vote, if possible.
City Council Bill 22-0292 Elected Officials Retirement System Benefits Eligibility, President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen.
Hold on. So you want to, you want to comment on your vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, the floor is yours. Sorry. We recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I sent a letter requesting that this bill be tabled. To be clear, I support a robust pension system and retirement system for public servants. We should be able to retire with dignity, as should anyone who serves in any branch of government. However, I'm concerned that in this legislation, we rushed through a hearing where our agencies asked for more time to deliberate, to provide options, to provide opportunities for us to have a system that does not disrupt the city's finances while at the same time preserves the pension system. I'm also concerned that this sends the wrong message to the communities that we serve. I would note that in 2010, the city council voted to increase the amount of time police and firefighters have to serve in order to get their pension from 20 to 25 years. I would note that in 2014, the city council made, reduced the benefits that non-elected government employees in Baltimore receive in their pension, and yet today, we are voting to shorten the duration for our own pension. I think that sends the wrong message. We know that Baltimoreans are struggling. We know that we are likely headed into a recession, and we know that we need to consistently put the interests and the needs of the communities we serve above our own. I vote no.
Thank you. Thank you for that. You know, words matter and facts matter, particularly as public servants. So I want to be really clear. The city council did not vote. That was in negotiation between the union and the administration at the time, which was under Stephanie Rollins Blake. Also, from a 2014 perspective, those benefits that were taken down are still the same benefits that extend on this policy. This is a companion bill that is a byproduct of the question K, which the citizens of Baltimore went out and resoundingly said that they want their city elected officials to have term limits of eight years, and this just aligns it with that. So I think it's important, particularly on this body, that we communicate out facts to our constituents and not necessarily use the talking points that we hear on Twitter. With that, Madam Clerk. Are you next, man? No, you're not next. You have to wait.
I'm debating with myself whether I wanted to put this amendment on the floor. I know it's very last minute for our colleagues to, to look at, and if the page can hand out the amendment.
We're voting at this point, so.
We can do amendments on third reader, sir.
You can, but the motion's already on the floor. We're already voting.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Yes.
Out of turn of the order of the roll call.
I did.
I believe that it was because that we were not yet at a roll call vote.
No, we're in a roll call vote. So I'm in the first vote. I didn't speak, and then Cohen is District One, he spoke. So the next person that has the ability of speaking.
With respect, Mr. President, the president spoke after Councilman Cohen.
I agree to that. It has nothing to do with what I'm saying. I'm saying that we're in roll call vote right now. I took my vote. He took his vote with his explanation, and the next person that gets to speak is Chairwoman McCray.
I'm sorry, point of order, Mr. President.
Sure, point of order, yeah.
The president spoke out of turn after Councilman Cohen, and I thought that was because we had not yet began the roll call, the roll call vote.
No, Councilman Cohen was very clear that he was speaking on his vote. That's why.
Councilman Cohen actually requested to speak before the roll call began.
He voted no, sir. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Chair McCray.
Sure.
The rules of order allow for a superseding motion to be made despite the fact that there is a roll call in process. I believe that a motion for an amendment is allowable by the rules of order despite the fact that there is a prior motion on the floor because there's an amendment to the motion that is on the floor.
I, I'm not sure what Robert rule of order you're kind of notating, but right now, there's a motion that's been, that's been on the floor, it's been applied, and we're in the middle of a roll call. So we're going to continue with the roll call.
Chair McCray. Dorsey.
Mr. President, members, I think that I've said what I had to say about the proceedings here at the moment. So aside from that, I'll just speak my piece again, as I did in the last council meeting, that the changes to the charter that would affect, that will be, that will be enacted as a result of question K will not have any direct impact until 2032, a decade from now. That is how long, one decade, that we have to make any changes that we may consider necessary to those who would vest in the pension. We have an amendment that, that Councilwoman Ramos would like to put forth, that I believe would exempt us here now from being the beneficiaries immediately of the change proposed by the president. And that would seem reasonable and a sensible way to address the public concern that Councilman Cohen has raised. I am concerned that we're not being allowed to hear that amendment proposal, to even consider it. And it is to Councilman Cohen's point that this bill seems to have been rushed through unnecessarily, as the concern related to question K will not take effect on any person, a member of this body, until a decade from now. We have a whole decade to make any changes, and yet we are taking this action before the effects of question K have even been enacted in law. I just can't understand why we are doing this, and I vote no.
Madam Clerk.
Conway. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett.
Body recognizes you.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. So I would, on aspects of this, agree with Councilmember Cohen, Councilmember Dorsey around the timing of this. I do wish that there were more hearings in committee to further deliberate on this. The thing that I would lift up is that the will of the voters has been that they want eight years in office for city council members. Absent of taking any action on this, we would be removing a benefit that every council member has been allotted since the elected official pension fund was established in 1983. The other thing I would lift up is that through my work in local progress, I've been able to work with elected officials from all over the country. And where we see the least level of diversity in elected bodies or on bodies that do not have any sort of pay or benefits for those elected officials. So in most of those jurisdictions, their bodies are made up of overwhelmingly white, male, and wealthy people. Taking away benefits for, for folks who we're asking people from community, people from all backgrounds for run for office, and then we're saying, well, we're not going to give you the ability to retire, has the potential to lead to those scenarios where this isn't a career path that people from modest income backgrounds choose to take on. I love the diversity of the body. I think that this body is representative of the city. Not everybody is like that. I would flag, I had an opportunity to work with Mayor Cantor of Cudahy, California, over the weekend on some other projects, and she told me that she was the first Latinx, Latinx mayor of her city in a city that is ninety-four percent Latinx. And so taking away things that make this job appealing, a thankless job, I would add, where we work a tremendous amount of hours, require a tremendous amount of understanding and expertise on a lot of issues, I think is the wrong step. I do wish there was more deliberation, but I also believe that this is ultimately the right thing to do, so that this is a job that people from any background can afford to do, and we're not asking someone to serve in a position for eight years without retirement benefits. Who would leave another job or leave a potential employer where they could retire with dignity after whatever period of time to take on one where they can't? But they still would have to pay into the system. I don't think it makes any sense to, to take no action. I wish that this was not before us this quickly, but for those reasons, I'll be voting yes, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk.
Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
At this time, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, since the last meeting, have tried to learn a lot about this bill. I have reviewed all of the notes, as well as looked at the hearing. It's been very clear to me that the, what our, my colleague from the Eighth District had said is that is true. We absolutely should be giving benefits to people who, because they would be term limited, would be for eight years. However, that's not what this bill says. What this bill says is those of us who are currently serving would get the eight years in addition to those who are serving, who get term limited starting in 2024. So my amendment would have, and I do apologize, I got it late, and it is my fault, to, to give to everybody. My amendment would have said that we, that are currently serving, would still be with the twelve years vestment period, and those who are newly elected in 2024 would get the eight years moving forward. And that way, it's been, it was very clear that it would just be for, for those who end up being term limited at the eight years. Our term limit is not eight years because we're serving now, and it doesn't kick in, question K doesn't kick into 2024. So for that reason, that I was unable to get it together, but also that I've been doing a lot more studying on this, I'm voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to point out, you know, how it doesn't kick into 2024. I think the voters have been very clear that they want term limits in the city of Baltimore, including us, right? So I think that we could, you know, kind of look in the mirror and say, hey, we get twelve years. I don't think that that's exactly what the voters want. They want term limits here in the city of Baltimore. Now, unfortunately, the charter was written in a way where people thought that they were going to get that right away, and they're not. It does extend out. But this provides ample opportunity for us to allow the citizens of Baltimore motivation to vote for term limits, for us to adhere to them. Again, you know, many of you can decide to take extra years or, you know, based off of, you know, pre-charter, but that's not what the voters want. They want a city that has elected officials with term limits, and everyone is free to mosey along how they would, so well would like to choose and please. So with that, the vote is eight yeses, five nos, and two abstentions. This bill is approved. Next up, clearing of the bills, members. The clearing of the bill status list can be found on page ten of the agenda. If you see an ordinance or resolution. As always, it's important for us to keep order in the chamber. You know, look, we make tough votes. There's tough decisions. At times, there's divisive type of opinions, but it's also important that we respect one another. So with that, we're going to move on. Again, members, the clearing of the bill status can be found on page ten of the agenda. If you see an ordinance or resolution on the list you would like to keep active in committee, please notify Natwana Austin before December the eighth. Note that the list will be published again in December fifth, as well as December eighth meeting agendas. Any bills that are not requested to remain active before conclusion of December eighth meeting will automatically be withdrawn. At this time, we're going to go into committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed. The first up is ECD. Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Economic and Community Development Committee would like to announce the following hearing, which will be held in the Clarence Dewburne Chambers at City Hall and online via WebEx. And this is on January twenty-fourth, 2023, at 2:00 p.m. Bill Number Twenty-two dash oh-two-eight-four, the Sarah and Street Historic District for sponsor Bullock.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next up, EWY, Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee has reconvened a hearing for Council Resolution Twenty-two dash zero-one-zero-seven R, informational hearing, school safety. The committee recessed this hearing on August the twenty-fifth, 2022. On Thursday, December the fifteenth, the committee invites the CEO of Baltimore City Public Schools, the police chief of Baltimore City, and the city police to come before the committee to give an update on school safety, because you know we are also starting to find more young people having guns, especially when they're thirteen years old and in elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Health, Environment, Technology. Chairwoman McCray, thank you. Next up, Public Safety Government Operations.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting to hear Bill LO-21 dash zero-zero-zero-six, Quarterly Crime Stats and Violence Prevention Plan on Thursday, December fifteenth, 2022, at 2:00 p.m. in the, in this room. The committee will also hear Bill Twenty-two dash zero-one-three-nine R, Investigative Hearing, Human Trafficking Investigations and Prosecutions on Wednesday, January, January fourth, 2023, at 1:00 p.m. in this room. The committee will hear Bill Twenty-two dash zero-one-three-zero R, Information Hearing, Routine Maintenance of City-Owned Lots and Buildings on Wednesday, January fourth, 2023, at 1:01 p.m. in this room. And the committee will hear Bill Twenty-two dash zero-one-three-eight R, Information Hearing, Coordination Between Police Commissioner, School Police, School Police Chief, and Sheriff on Wednesday, January eleventh, 2023, at 1:00 p.m. in this room. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, Rules and Legislative Oversight. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last, but certainly not least, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend Rule Ten Two to announce a hearing.
Without objection, Rules Ten Two and Ten Three will be suspended. Hearing knowing readiness, they are suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November twenty-ninth, at 10:00 a.m. Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero-two-nine-three, Sale of Property, Thirteen Twenty-One Filbert Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee of the whole will also hold a work session on City Council Bill Twenty-two dash one-nine-five, Inclusionary Housing of Baltimore City, on Monday, December the twelfth, at 5:00 p.m. The hearing will be televised live on Charm City TV, Channel Twenty-five. Now, we're going to move to regular announcements. Members, if you have a regular announcement, please raise your hand. I'll call you. Councilwoman Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. I just wanted to thank you all for a really great hearing on the bill that the council president just mentioned. We had a very robust hearing last Thursday. I want to thank council services staff. You were all there waiting, you know, being there late at night, so I appreciate that. And of course, my colleagues being there. I think it was a great hearing, and we have still a lot, we just have a few things that we need to work out with the administration and a few other stakeholders, so I'm confident that we can do that, and I appreciate, Mr. President, the opportunity to work on the bill and, and the hearing. So I just wanted to thank my colleagues. I have, also want to invite everyone to, probably the best thing that happens in my district is the Thirty-Fourth Street Lights, Hampton's gift to Baltimore. It is a fabulous block of, seven hundred block of West Thirty-Fourth Street. Love to see you there. The opening, the first lighting is on Saturday at six o'clock. And then, of course, the mayor's Christmas parade is also two weeks after that. Again, it's not Christmas in Baltimore without the lights and also without the mayor's Christmas parade, so look forward to seeing everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Councilman Dorsey, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to give a shout out to all of our city workers who work out in the cold. It's cold out. I was out yesterday morning for a couple hours while a couple guys from Wreckin' Parks, a crew of four guys from Wreckin' Parks were taking down a tree in my neighborhood in below freezing temperatures. I think it was twenty-seven degrees yesterday morning. There are folks out there with DPW fixing water main breaks in freezing temperatures in the middle of the night, standing in a foot and a half of water with rubber boots over their feet. There are people out there doing all kinds of work for the city day and night in these very cold temperatures and in all sorts of inclement weather, and I just think it's really important to acknowledge, acknowledge and recognize the dedication and the work, the hard work that these folks put in to make sure that our city is up and running and continuously able to deliver for the citizens year round. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, council member. Any other regular announcements? Hearing and seeing none. A final announcement, members can find our 2023 regular meeting schedule in the packet on their desk materials that was distributed at tonight's meeting. The dates will also be posted on Legisstar, so please make sure that we have our offices note those dates. If you have any concerns or problems, please let us know in advance. The chair, at this time, would like to recognize Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. And before I close out, I do want to also send a shout out to Director Dana Moore for, with Director of the Equity Office, for really taking time to interview her and her office, for interviewing people and getting set for these folks to come before the council at a hearing for, to start the Women's Commission again. It's a very important commission as we move forward with the needs of women in, in our city. The next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, December fifth, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. And may we have a moment of silence for Janine Michael, and also prayers to the families in Colorado Springs from the tragedy that happened a few days ago, and also the now two ninety-nine homicides that we have in our city. Pray for those families, and of course, our continued prayers for the people that continue to suffer from the COVID pandemic and our opioid epidemic.
There being no new, new business before the desk, this will conclude the forty-fourth meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council.